On the iWatch here, so I'd like to call to order the Village of Cambridge Board of Trustees meeting of Tuesday, August 26th. Roll call, please.
Bruni.
Here.
Trundle.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Grecklow.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
All right. If I could get everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Dean can lead us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. All right, Lucy, I see that we have an agenda that is over 100 pages, so proof of posting, please.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Center, Badger B, the post office, and the village website.
All right, thank you for that. And I'm getting some texts now for different agendas. Is that a new thing?
Yes.
Okay. And is that for anybody that signs up?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So if anybody is interested out there and wants to know, be in the know when we have our meetings, just sign up on the website and you'll get those courtesy texts as well. With that being said, number four, public comment. First, go around to public comment. Anybody want to come on up? No? Okay, we're gonna move on then to number five, approval of the consent agenda. And on that consent agenda is the village board minutes of 8:12, 2025, as well as Water and Sewer Committee of 8:19, 2025. Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we got Blackwood and do we, would you like us to still say our names before we do that?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. We got a motion from Blackwood and a second from?
Schultz.
Schultz with no T.
Correct.
Right, okay. Any questions, concerns about that? No? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Now Lucy, we'll go on to number six here on reports. Usually I would tell Sarah that when we have something in the consent agenda, we don't necessarily have to give a report on it, but if you'd like, we can give like a broad brush for Water and Sewer?
Yes, so usually when there's been meetings from since our last one, they'll do a committee report.
So with that being said, we'll kick it off with our first report being Water and Sewer Committee, just the short, upridged version.
A few big ticket items. Well, number three unfortunately needs $30,000 worth of work. We discussed this quite a bit and Cody really dug into all of that. The issue with it is not covered under warranty. And so we decided to go through with that because we have to or we risk the well not working. A new submersible pump needs to be installed. Is that correct, Cody?
Yes.
So we're going ahead with that and we went with a $30,000 quote versus a $42,000 quote. We also decided to post the utility superintendent position with a pay range of $60,000 to $70,000. Cody is working 55 hours plus per week and so we definitely need to get that filled. We also decided to, with Cody's recommendation, to charge a $40 fee per bulk water hookup so that we can get paid for Cody's time each time there's a bulk hookup. And we also decided to charge $25 to $40 for final reads. Does that sound thorough, Lucy? Okay.
Okay. Any questions to Sarah on Water and Sewer?
Do we have an idea of how many bulk hookups we have, like per month, per year, per something-ish?
I don't have the exact numbers, but the solar company hooks up. I believe they get... These are just rough numbers that I'm struggling to bring up, but I think they get about 40,000 gallons a day. And it's roughly 4,000 gallons at a time, so they get about, depending on the day, about 10 hookups per day just from the solar company.
Wow. And they're getting charged for that water as well as the?
Previously, they were only charged for the water that they took.
Okay.
And it's in our rate file that we can, and it is up to us how we charge a bulk hookup fee. And it was at my recommendation that we charged $40, which is in our rate file per hookup.
Nice. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Moving on to 6B, library board. Jennifer?
That is me. We had our meeting on August 20th. The library director was out of town on our regularly scheduled second Wednesday of the month. We are working on the budget development for the library for the fiscal year of 2026. The dry up window replacement was completed by Vogel Brothers and it is a secure and easy to use. The library staff is very happy about that. And we have invited the new school superintendent to the library and to attend a library board meeting. The fall HVAC inspection by Harker Heating and Cooling found that two of the chillers were down and so Samantha, the library director, is working with them on getting that fixed.
All right, anything, Jennifer? All right. Moving on to C, fire and EMS commission report.
So we had our last meeting last week, Thursday. We continue to work on the IGA review and revisions, so we should be hopefully resolving that in the next month or two months probably. We have been able to finally set a regular meeting date and time going forward, which will be the third Wednesday of every month at the fire station at 6:30. We are gonna be working on our budget at our next meeting on September 17th. Lucy, you were gonna get the third, or the 2% dues right for the?
It's in the?
Perfect, okay. That's all I got.
For the IGA revisions? More curiosity, there's a couple things that are really contentious areas in there. Is the plan then the, all right, we've made some revisions to it, doesn't it still have to be approved by every community?
Yep.
Do you feel like, from the committee's standpoint, if you can get the committee to agree to that, then they'll?
Yeah, I feel like we're making good headway. People are very agreeable to wording changes, things along those lines. And then yes, the, once the final document is gone through, then we will bring it back to the communities for review.
Okay, good.
And it's up for, it expires in 2028, right?
Yeah.
How has coverage been? Have you heard?
To my knowledge, we have had paramedic coverage, I think, all but one? I think all but one day since May, so we're doing better.
That's good.
Okay. Moving on to 6D, planning commission. Brian?
We met last night here in this room. There are five agenda items in the new business for recommendations from that, so I'm not gonna kind of go over that. We'll be going through those. But I do want to touch on that item E, which is the, what we did was we looked at the updated Village of Cambridge fee schedule. Obviously, some of the things are planning area things that we're gonna look at making adjustments for, but I just want to report that from the committee's standpoint, we liked that there were all the fees put together. I know there's some other areas and so our recommendation was to continue to work with staff to find, hey, that should probably go into licensing board or might go into Public Works for any of those fees and just make sure we're always kind of reviewing those. There's definitely some old fees that need to be updated in there, so. Other than that, that's pretty much our agenda for us.
Okay. Unless there's any questions, we'll move right into economic development.
Okay, well, that one is fresh on the head because we just met earlier this evening. So one of the items that we went through was, and it was on the agenda. It was brought to us from a member of the public is economic development's stance on data centers and impact on that, which I thought was interesting. The letter was basically crafted as, see, some cities, towns, villages have made recommendations that we don't want that and put actual rules in place to state they don't want those things there. So we just talked high level. I think I provided quite a bit of insight into my knowledge of this. I don't think it's anything pressing for economic development or the village board at this time. Obviously, we're pretty zoned in and things like that, but it's something to keep an eye on. It's impacting our neighbors. There's been other areas around our community looking at that. There's a lot of environmental impact on those, so power and water and things like that.
Power especially.
Yep. The other thing is that we talked about, so last fall, Anactis and the UW Whitewater team brought forth a proposal to run a contest in Cambridge. They were looking for any, maybe a little bit of help from the village for some funding for that. At the time, that didn't work, so the collaborative took that effort over. I think they did a great job. But we talked in economic development about inviting Kathy to the next meeting to talk about lessons learned and as we have time now to see if that's gonna come into fruition this fall or this spring again, what weighs the economic development or the village board to make some recommendations to see where we can help out with that. The other item that we talked about was new businesses coming to town. We thought it was important that we discuss that in economic development and new business openings in town and then offer up, possibly let those businesses know if they'd like to do a ribbon cutting or something else like that. Make sure that we can see about getting involved, just very small things to promote some of the economic development. And that's it.
Sounds like a productive meeting. Moving on to F, administrator report. That's you, Lucy? It looks like we got about five items here.
Yes, I just put a bunch of the items that you gave me under report because I didn't believe any action was going to be taken. Just more updates. LBK Park update, the document, the proposal was signed. And after the last meeting, they did keep the same initial price. And then that was submitted to Lee Recreation. And Cody is actually going to be meeting out with staff from Lee Recreation tomorrow at the park to look at good sites. And they were hopeful that October-ish, depending on weather. And if the weather does not cooperate this fall, what would happen is they would keep it in storage and do it as soon as the ground was okay to work with in the spring. But we're hoping for a mild fall so we can get that in this year. So that is that. And then I did ask regarding payment and at this time, no payment was needed. I just needed to sign the proposal. Next, any questions regarding that? Next item, the audit update. I know I sent the board an email, but I had shared at the last board meeting that the audit was complete. I just got that email right before the meeting started and didn't read the full context. It would not be released until 369 journal entries were entered. And I finished those on Sunday and I reached out to Bowman. I sent the updated reports that they needed to make sure that it matched their numbers. At that point, then, they could release it. They were working on it today. They knew we had a village board meeting this evening where I would like to say it all matched perfectly. I did not get an update before this meeting started, but I will continue to let you know if everything matched up perfectly or if a few more adjustments were needed. So that is where we are at and as soon as that is completed, I will share the final draft of the audit with you all and put it on our website. And also regarding that, just for anybody watching or in our audience, if you would like a copy of the final audit, that will also be on our website once it's been finalized for anyone to have. So I would prefer people to just go to the website and download it instead of having staff. If otherwise, it would be an open records request, which that is gonna be publicly facing documents. Next item, personnel update. So this Thursday, the Personnel Committee will be having a short meeting and then just one member of Public Works will be attending to do an interview for our utility superintendent candidate. And so, and as for the Public Works position, I know at the last meeting, trustee Hollenbeck wanted me to look in the budget and see if there was any excess wage money for a Public Works employee and there is not. But I guess to be continued. If, depending on how Thursday goes, we'll follow up and maybe that will be brought to the next village board meeting with recommendations. Welcome to Cambridge signs. That, Cody is working on the DOT application. And anything else regarding that?
Yes.
That you'd like to share?
Yeah, I can give a quick update on that. The permits for the Welcome to Cambridge signs, one of the two major permits have been submitted. Really, there's four total. We had to submit a permit to ourselves for right-of-way work and the right-of-way permit. We submitted that. That has been approved. Thank you, Lucy. We submitted one to the DOT for placing the sign in the right-of-way. We're waiting for approval on that. And then there's a Jefferson County permit that we have to wait for approval from the DOT sign permit to get the number off that one to put on the Jefferson County sign permit. And then we are working through some issues with the outdoor advertising permit. I don't know why we need that exactly, but DOT says we need that, so we're working to get that one submitted. We're running into some account issues, so we're going back and forth with the DOT on that. So overall, one of the two major permits has been submitted. One is pending on another permit and one minor one we was in-house. So there's, some have been submitted, other ones pending approval of other permits and then we're working through an issue on the outdoor advertising.
Yeah, this thing has been lingering for years now and I wonder, I'm gonna wonder out loud here if some municipalities just say to hell with it and put up the signs and then like beg for forgiveness after the fact because this is, this is double digits now in years.
Yeah.
Trying to get the signs up.
I don't know why.
And it's not for lack of trying. I get it, but it's, I don't know how these other municipalities do it because if they had to go through, I don't know. But I appreciate all the efforts Cody and Lucy. Keep up the, keep the press on. We'll get those signs up yet.
I could not have done it without help from our volunteers either, so that was very, very helpful. So that's where we're at with the?
Because I just have one more thing and then it's you.
Yeah.
And then the next thing was that was put on the list was the bike trail grant payback. And I will say, I can't even remember how long ago it was. I feel like months. Myself and trustee Hollenbeck and Steve Struss and I believe it was Laura Payne met to go over all of the details. Myself, I was going to do more digging to see if I, because there's a huge discrepancy. And Steve Struss was also going to do some digging and I have not followed up, so I have a note to follow up with him.
What was the dollar amount for the huge discrepancy?
So we had a $30,000 approximately. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but it was around 30,000. And Steve during that meeting found like a few thousand dollars that he saw that wasn't accounted for on their end. But again, the gap is still quite large and so? What was that?
That could pay for a submersible pump.
So that is something that I will have to reach back out to Steve. It is a, it's a difficult situation because this all ended years ago. And, and so now we're bringing it to, I believe they were communicated with, but then so much time went on with no action that now we're asking for them to pay a share and it was from years ago and now we're trying to compare documentation, which is differentiating. There was an engineer there from, I believe it was Town and Country when we met.
Yeah, it's not any difference than if I don't pay my taxes for years and, you know, you didn't think the government's gonna say, ah, don't worry about it, don't worry about the 30,000, we'll, you know, we've still gotta pay our taxes. They're gonna still garnish our pay, so.
And just based off of this situation, and I wasn't here obviously when this happened, but I do not recommend the Village of Cambridge being the fiscal agency for any projects going forward.
Seems like they should be honoring a good faith agreement.
Yeah.
You know? So I think that's my biggest hangup is if the agreement was made, regardless of whether it was last month, last year.
And I know the village made a donation. We donated, I want to say, 5,000, 5 to 8,000 dollars for this project, but?
I wanna say it was 5,000.
But now here, all of a sudden, it's? Yeah, but they, they needed a municipality to be the fiscal agent to get the grant money. So we offered that up with the understanding and we can go back and look at the minutes with the understanding that nothing comes out of pocket from Cambridge and now here we are in this situation, so.
Do we know what year that was? Ish?
18?
That's what it started. So the documents and folders and folders upon folders of paper documents that I've sifted through and then our accounting software, but it was like 2018 to 2022, 2023 maybe? At the very latest that it wrapped up, so it was a span of years.
And do we know approximately when that agreement was made, just to kind of review that?
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah. I think once Mr. Salau found out that, and he was the county clerk at the time, he found out that we could be eligible for this, at the time was one of the largest grants out there. They needed to kind of grease the skids and see who the fiscal, you know, agent would be. And so I think to answer your question, you're gonna go and review YouTube or whatever. It was during Steve Struss's time, so I want to say 2019, mid 2019.
Thanks.
So.
And then Cody, you wanna take the?
Actually, one more.
Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question on your report. On the personnel update, Jennifer is able to make it to the interviews.
On Thursday.
Oh, you are. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
5:30.
Yep.
How many candidates?
One. But it is a very qualified candidate.
Thanks, Lucy.
And then Cody, do you wanna speak about Main Street?
Yes, no problem. Do you want a director's report or would you just like to ask about, would you just like to get into the utility work on Main Street?
I would like a director's report.
Absolutely. Since the last village board meeting, major points of note that were accomplished by the Department of Public Works and the Water Department, where we removed a dangerous tree limb from 308 Park. It was threatening the house, threatening the sidewalk, threatening the driveway. We did that this morning, actually. A lot of storm damage. It made it worse. We've been fielding resident inquiries and calls and pictures for the lead service line inventory and updating and maintaining our lead service line inventory spreadsheet for the EPA and DNR compliance. I had a compliance meeting with our DNR rep, Amy Kubli, and we discussed our 2023 sanitary survey and how we are going to achieve compliance in 2026, which is our next sanitary survey. Did some updating on some policies, especially for on-call and bulk hookup fees. A lot of diggers hotline requests. We have received bulk salt delivery for well three for our softeners. We also received a bulk chemical delivery of chlorine and fluoride at well three. And for about two weeks straight, probably, I would about, every day I had to go in and troubleshoot and repair the chlorine pump at well three for various different reasons every single time. I'm fairly certain it is operational, is operating the way it is supposed to be. It has been for the last four or five days, so hopefully that stays the way it should.
Did a little magic on the weekend or something.
Thank you, because, oh man, yeah, it was a headache for, there for about two weeks. We have so far repaired 100 feet total of brick on Main Street. So starting at the intersection of Spring Street and Main on the south side of the road, right in front of the record shop going west. We've accomplished 100 feet of repair and we're working our way down as much as we can as time allows. Well Three Submersible Pump Project has been approved by the DNR. We got confirmation from Mid-City today that the DNR put the stamp of approval on it. So now the parts are going to be ordered, so that should be really the only hangup is just waiting for the parts to come in for the Well Three Submersible Pump. Locks on all Public Works buildings and municipal water buildings were changed. We, I have a meeting scheduled with the DNR rep. I forget his name at the time or right now, but for the 2026 Tree Grant. We could possibly, if we qualify for the grant, we could be reimbursed up to $5,000. So if we spend 10,000, we would get reimbursed 5,000. They only reimburse 50%. We're gonna see if we can find some, find some tree money there, hopefully from 26. And I already discussed the welcome signs. What about the utility work on Main Street and surrounding areas? I spoke with, so it is Alliant Energy that is doing preventative maintenance on gas mains. So they're just, they're essentially repairing the gas, I'm sorry, not repairing, completely replacing the gas main. They're going from a four-inch steel pipe to a four-inch HDPE pipe, it's just high-density plastic. And they're doing this as a preventative measure for aging infrastructure essentially. And they started on North Street June? I want to say, it's been a while. It's been a while now. And they've started on, they started on North Street and then had to go to Main Street and a little bit down West Water. I spoke with?
Cody, this is a lot for the people out there watching the video that are always, you know, they're wondering what's going on with all the construction and everything and?
Yeah, no problem. Please ask me questions and I will try to, like, I'll try to answer them as best I can, so.
Some folks had thought that it was, you know, utilities getting buried underground. I know that that was brought up when we redid this alley area, whether we're gonna do that. If you can confirm? if you can confirm that that had happened or isn't happening, whatever the case is, it would dispel some rumors as well, so...
So the utilities are being buried underground, they previously were buried underground, and they're just replacing the old ones that were there with new ones, is essentially what they're doing before there's a problem, so before it's zero degrees out in the middle of winter and a gas main malfunctions and people lose gas and heat, they're taking care of it now. So, and, and my opinion, that's a really, really awesome thing.
Proactive.
Yeah, proactive, not reactive, that's what we aim for, uh, and I did get some timelines on when hopefully work is gonna be completed. There's two separate crews working, one is replacing the gas main, and that crew is working on Main Street right now, and then there's a separate crew that is essentially fixing all the holes that they dug and the concrete and cement that they tore out, so there's... The gas main replacement, uh, that should be done, I was, I spoke with that crew earlier today and yesterday, and they should be done by next Friday, so the actual holes in the ground on Main Street should be filled by next Friday, that doesn't mean there's gonna be new sidewalk, though, not yet, so they're gonna fill it, they've put in temporary, uh, cold patch, blacktop, and that's just until the concrete crew, the other crew that's working on North Street right now, can get there. So the concrete crew is working on North Street because that is the oldest, uh, part of the project, so they're catching up from oldest to newest, and I've been told by the concrete crew that they will be done on North Street on Friday, and then they're going to, so there's a... We have our decorative sidewalk on Main Street that was installed, I've, I've been told two decades ago, and nobody knows where that decorative stone came from. I've called previous directors, I've called previous employees, I've called, I've tried to find where the stone came from to try to help these guys source this stone, so they can match the sidewalks that they tore out. So right now, the concrete, uh, crew is so, trying to find, essentially trying to find a stone that is the closest match, and they've got a few places that they're getting samples from, and they're gonna do, essentially do a s- a one sidewalk square, they're gonna see if it matches, if it does, they're gonna buy a whole bunch of it and finish the rest of it. So, once they find the stone, they said it'll be about two weeks to complete the sidewalk on Main Street. I hope that answers any, any questions that, uh, with the work on Main Street.
Yeah. Any other questions for Cody and his Public Works crew?
I have one, um, I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but if the weather turned a bit, um, we had voted to not approve the, uh, snowplow truck, um, a little while ago, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they had said that they may need to make some repairs, adjustments to the other equipment, just wanna make sure we're on top of that, right, following up on that, we need that.
So Brian, there was a motion for staff to look for newer used available...
Correct.
Snowplows that would be available for this winter.
Do we have an update on that, or?
No, because we are waiting on the audit being finalized, so that elders can help...
Sounds good.
Okay.
With borrowing.
Like I said, I just remember in the interim, there was, maybe we needed some repairs to make sure the other ones, so...
Okay.
Yes, now, the Chevy, I forget what year it is, the Chevy snowplow will absolutely need some repairs.
Okay.
But if we get a new one, that won't need to happen.
Anything else for Cody?
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That being said, we will go into approval of bills, uh, discussion, possible action, Lucy.
The first run, for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents, second run, eighty thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, for a total of a hundred and eight, a hundred and eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents.
I will make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Questions about bills, we got the...
On the second run, the two percent, what, how was the fire EMS two thing?
So two percent dues is basically just a pass-through from the state to the fire department, it's based on, um, insurance premiums, things along those lines, so it's just a straight pass-through.
Is that once a year, or a quarter, or quarterly?
Quarterly, I believe.
Okay.
Lucy, do you wanna go over the highlights?
Sure, um, so for bills over five thousand, we have GFL, um, garbage and recycle pickup for nine thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and four cents, we have Dean Health Plan, eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, uh, this is, uh, for three months, July, August, and September, um, we did not realize that we were behind, um, and I made a phone call to check because, uh, uh, there was a dispute and it was cleared up, so we needed to pay the three months. Um, and then we have the Dancing Goat Distillery, that is their second payment, uh, the, um, earlier this year, I believe at the end of May, we paid the other half of their incentive. Um, then we have, uh, Cambridge Fire EMS Commission, which is the two percent of fire, that's just a pass-through. We have Bear Insurance, which is our property and li- liability insurance for eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, Associated Bank, uh, which is one of our, uh, loans from, I believe, twenty fourteen, and that is for sixteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars, and then the Village of Deerfield for twenty-three thousand seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents, and that is for our police.
Okay. All right, thank you, uh, if there's not any more questions, uh, roll call, please.
Bruni?
Yes.
Rendell?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Cracklow?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Okay, bills are paid, and I will send this around for signature, we'll start over here with you, Brian. All right, let's see, going on to eight, new business discussion and possible action regarding, uh, looks like we got a rezone request of one-eleven Spring Street.
So that one we'll be tabling because Plan Commission did not recommend it to the board.
Okay.
Um, I had put that on in case that went through yesterday, so we will table that.
Okay, um, moving on to eight B, CSM for three-one-three and four-oh-three East Main Street.
You wanna cover that, or I can, I can cover that one?
It's up to you.
Okay, sounds good, um, so that is for, it's, it's in the packet, it's the church parking lot, uh, with the comprehensive plan, they split the, where the church parsonage was, uh, it was mixed-use, low-use, they just wanna basically be, clean that up, and so it's a very small adjustment to the comp plan from a mixed-use to light use, um, for that, so that recommendation was, uh, from the Plan Commission to approve that moving forward, so...
Okay.
And then just a note that that recommendation is, um, subject to a rezone application because there are two different zoning districts within that plan, and, um, so that rezoning application was sent to that party, and this will be coming back again for, for the rezoning approval.
One more piece of paperwork they have to fill out because it's split, so...
So are we putting the cart for the horse here, then, do we need to pull off on this?
We could still, uh, ma- have a motion, uh, and then have it, um, make the motion to approve the CSM for, uh, three-one-three and four-oh-three East Main Street pending a approved rezoning application.
All right, Brian, you wanna make that?
Yep, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve CSM for three-one-three and four-oh-three East Main Street, pending the approval of the rezoning, uh, application paperwork.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Blackwood'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any questions? That explanation was pretty good, so, uh, all those in favor of approval of CSM for three-one-three and four-oh-three East Main Street, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, this has been approved. Moving on to eight C, extraterritorial CSM for Michael Bus Trust in Section Eight of the Town of Oakland.
You did better with that street name than I did, yes, um, so the, these are the next two, uh, these are where we are neighboring with our neighboring communities, uh, they have already gone through approvals with those communities, we also, as a neighboring community, have to sign off on these CSM plans, um, so... The first one is, uh, the Michael Bus Trust, Section Eight, all the map and everything is in there, um, it is, uh, very, very low impact for Village of Cambridge, um, so we approved that as well, made a recommendation, the board approved that from there, um, so, any questions on that one? Okay, uh, Chris, you want me to just go and make a motion on that one? Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extraterritorial, extraterritorial CSM for Michael Bus Trust in Section Eight of the Town of Oakland, as, uh, recommended by the Plan Commission.
Okay. All right, trustee Brunig seconds. Uh, any questions on that extraterritorial CSM? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
The second one is the extraterritorial CSM for part of Lot Four, Block Two, Woodcrest in the Town of Oakland, again, it's a neighboring community, uh, there's four lots that are going up along the side there, uh, again, approved by all the, uh, other communities neighboring us, uh, they need our approval on that one, uh, recommendation from the Planning Commission was to go ahead and approve that as well, so...
Okay.
And all the materials are in the packet, so...
Sounds good, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extraterritorial CSM for part of Lot Four, Block Two, Woodcrest of the Town of Oakland.
Okay.
Schultz'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, any questions, concerns? All those in favor of the approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second extraterritorial CSM is approved. Uh, moving to eight E, draft of updated Village of Cambridge fee schedule, I know for a fact Lucy has been diligently working on this fee schedule because ours is sorely outdated, so I will let you take the football on this one, Lucy.
Absolutely, so, um, this is just a very early draft, and I wanted to share it early in the process because I don't wanna get close to thinking I'm done, and then all of a sudden, um, others, I want you guys to take a look at this, send me, um, emails if there's things that you don't see on there, anything that you have questions about, um, I'm utilizing other municipalities' fee schedules to compare where, where, with, uh, their recommendation, I'm also working with MSA, um, the planner, Stephen Tremlett, and, uh, our building inspector, Stephanie Potter, because with, going with MSA for building inspection, we definitely needed to, our, um, all of our building inspection permit fees were well below average, and therefore, we would be in the red, and so my goal is to hopefully have this wrapped up within the next month, and so that we can implement the resolution, and so all I ask, no action tonight because we're, we're very early in the process, but for everyone to review it, and just please send me any feedback or things that you like added. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Plan Commission brought up, which I will do, is there's bits and pieces that kind of affect all different parts of different committees and parts of the village, so, uh, I'm going to color-code the Excel doc, um, to try to keep it, I'm not gonna be able to necessarily because I'm not sure if I can just separate it fully, um, because it is also based on what type of permit is, but I'll try to differentiate, and then going forward, we need to review this either annually or semi, semi, I'm sorry, bi-annually, um, to make sure that we are reviewing this, um, many of these items are well over ten years old.
Yeah, I think that's, that's important to note, that this is a, this is gonna be a living document, right? So with that being said, uh, certain committees, certain, um, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna need to provide input to the administrator, to the administrative staff on what the trends are, and you know, what, you know, because it is a living document, it's gonna, we can't afford, as a community, to, to let there be a ten-year lapse on our fee schedule because we can see how that's affecting us now, so... Uh, I don't want us to be a fee-laden community, but, uh, I think we need to start replicating what some of our municipalities around us are, are doing for fees to assist us with our budgeting, so... Uh, thanks for the hard work on that, appreciate it, and moving on to eight F, unless there's questions on the fee schedule?
One quick one, uh, Cody's new one, is that on the thing, I didn't even see it on there yet?
No.
Well, gotta make sure that was on there.
That will be added.
All right, make sure, good.
Yes.
Moving on to eight F, Department of Public Works Water Sewer On-Call Policy Updates, uh, who's got this? Cody? Come on down.
The Water Sewer Committee, I believe, made a recommendation to the board to approve the new, or, excuse me, the updated on-call policy for the weekend duties, and the Department of Public Works Emergency After Hours Phone Policy, and I can go through any questions you, you would have about it. Brief overview, anything?
Yeah, sure.
What constitutes an emergency?
Yep.
I can tell you right here, so, a village roadway block due to a downed tree or flooding, uh, a water or sewer backup caused by village infrastructure, uh, water main leaks, those are examples of emergencies that we will, should, and can come in for. Examples that are not an emergency and can wait until normal business hours, mist brushing compost pickup, uh, non-emergency utility locates, park maintenance, so if the toilet paper at the bathroom is out, that can wait until normal business hours. We've had some issues in the past where, uh, we get a call on the weekend and someone will say, you know, you, you need to come take care of this right now, and I've had, and for example, I've, I've had a, a, a call in where someone said, you know, there's this, uh, roadkill in, in the middle of the road, and it's, there, it's disrupting traffic, or some things are going on where they, it, the, the emergency ma- is made to seem terrible, and I get there and it's, unfortunately, it's just a baby raccoon, and it's off on the side of the road. Not something that, that, that we need to pay someone two hours of overtime to come in and take care of when we can take care of it on normal business hours where it doesn't cost us anything extra. Uh, I believe it would help the public, uh, to have a clear outline of what is and isn't an emergency, I apologize, I actually didn't read the definition of an emergency. A situation where conditions arise due to a disaster or other events that impair critical infrastructure and/or essential services requiring immediate action to protect life, property, or public health. And I did look at other municipalities' definition of emergency too, to, for reference. Is there any questions about the emergency after-hours phone policy?
You guys might get a call and say, that's not an emergency, right, but you keep an eye, you know, we'll look at, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we...
The public knows that it's got hurt, right?
Right, we, we note it down, hey, there's a, we note it, hey, there's a roadkill over on whatever street, we'll come get it on Monday.
Got it.
But...
Good.
Yeah. And then the on-call policy for utility and village public works duties, um, I wanted to get this updated for... I wanted to get this updated for, one, to just be clear on the duties that should be done on the weekends, and two, in case we get a new employee, it's very clear on what is expected of them during the weekend duty. So I looked up the old policy, and it was like some of our fee schedules very, very out of date. Well, three wasn't even on the schedule, or, or excuse me, on the duties of things that had to be checked. There were things that were completely irrelevant, that aren't even part of our infrastructure anymore. So I tried my best to update what it is we actually need to take care of on the weekend, and what, and make expectations clear.
So Cody, Lucy, is there actionable items on here? Do we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, make the motion to approve the DPW Water and Sewer On-Call Policy Updates.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Brunig and Cracklow. Any questions, updates, concerns?
These are not dated, so I was wondering if we could have the date that they were revised on there so that we could get into, uh, cadence of reviewing these either annually or biannually.
Absolutely, we could put a date and a signature on the, on the bottom, and these were from scratch, if I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes, so this is not based off of previous.
Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yes.
Does staff responded well to it?
Uh, we've already, we've already been doing the duties that are on the, the list, so it was really just, just, uh, getting it down on paper. Um, and I, the phone policy is new, and I think that will, I think we've all, all the staff has shared a, a time or two when we were called in for something that definitely could have waited. So I think they're, I think they will respond well to that.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the policy updates, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, policy updates are approved. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, old business, number nine, discussion of possible action regarding fifteen point six zero floodplain regulations ordinance update. Uh, the original, um, packet or agenda had the fireworks in there. Talking with Lucy, we decided to just focus on one ordinance at a time, uh, get one done, and then move on to the next one, kind of thing. So we will take care of this floodplain regulation ordinance since we're getting a, a lot of help from the state on it. And Lucy, do you have an update?
So I have reached out to my DNR contact, who has been on vacation for the last week and a half, um, but will be returning Monday. Trustee Hollenbeck had some questions for me that I had emailed regarding, um, would current, uh, property owners be grandfathered in, how many people are affected? Um, so that information I do not have at this time. Um, it, I am okay with putting this on the next one, or if there's parts that we can work on and go through for updating, and then anything in question, uh, just have to, I guess, go, go over those briefly. It's, it's up to you guys how you want to proceed with this.
Yeah, I think is, uh, from my standpoint, is rather than kind of nickel and diamond, if, as information comes in, just record it and then kind of give a briefing as, as we have a meeting.
Okay.
So that way it's not kind of piecemealed. We basically want to put this to bed here fairly soon, so. Uh, thank you for the update. Anything else for Lucy on that?
Should we just then get feedback back to Lucy on any of those things? I, there was like one or two things. I mean, I'm, I'm not a expert at water, floodplain or anything, but there was a, just in general, a couple of things are like, you have a zoning administrator and administrator's office and these things that go to this thing, and I'm like,
And so that.
If we don't have it, maybe it might be in the personnel, fine, is this is the role that's.
Yep.
Something else. That was the only.
Another hat for you.
So that I learned, um, because that I reached out early on because that was one of the beginning questions that she had for me. And so as the administrator, um, I am, myself and the village board, we're the zoning administrators. That's why ultimately, any rezones or zoning issues, go to Plan Commission and come here for final approval. So that is, we don't have, um, with MSA, we have a planner and zoning specialist, but again, they don't, they just assist us and provide guidance. Ultimately, it's the board that, uh, is making the decisions.
That's what it read to me, too. It just seemed like we should probably, it, it might not even be adjustment here, but like in personnel, to point out that that whoever is also designated as the whatever office of.
Yep.
Okay.
Whereas it's, it's part of the administrator's duties, is that what you're saying? Duties and responsibility?
Yeah, just that, yeah, so it's pointed out.
If you go on AccessDane and look up a parcel on, for zoning, it just has the village hall's information for all municipalities.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was something that I did get to touch up with her early, but any other questions? Just send them to me, and I will, um, provide updates. I do expect to get, uh, have some work completed on this, uh, next week, and then hopefully by the next board meeting, it'll be updated and, and closer to be adopted.
All right. Next is, uh, nine B, and that's Kristen, Fire and EMS Commission Third Quarter Invoice. Kristen and, and Lucy, it looks like.
Yep. Our third quarter is due no later than August thirty-first, um, the, for a hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. So, we'll see, I don't know if you have anything else to add, or do we just need a motion, or?
Uh, so we could start with, well, a motion, and then regarding this, we don't have the funds budgeted for this because we are over budget. We do have the money in our bank account, um, so we would be borrowing from other areas where we have, uh, we, we do have plenty to make this happen, um, to have that in time without the late fee. And then that, when we do go out for borrowing, the o- overage amount will all be put towards the, this account within our, uh, general ledger. Um, so it's not something we can't pay, just it needs to be known that we are over budgeted on this area, in this buying item, and that, again, we will be borrowing to pay for this as well as the fourth quarter. But that will be replenished, and we will, we will, um, be in the black. This isn't going to put any of our, uh, accounts, uh, negative as a whole.
I believe we're already in the hole, sixty-seven thousand.
Yes.
For full transparency, so.
For the budget, is right.
Yeah. So, looks like we have the funds to pay it, but it's going to have to come out of other things, so, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion and a second, then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire EMS Commission Third Quarter Invoice for one hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll take, I'll second.
All right, discussion.
Um, one thing that I wanted to share with the board, um, I have connections with a lot of people, um, in Oconomowoc, um, Della Field area. I heard through some people that I know, um, a family specifically chose not to move to Cambridge because of our fire and EMS situation. So I just think that's important for the public to know. Um, that's just one family. So that's very unfortunate for a community.
Was it concerns with the service, or the cost, or the future, or?
The service, the service. The family, it was an older couple, I believe, um, and so they were very concerned about not having adequate response time, things like that. So I just, I think that's important to, for everyone to know.
So, anybody on the board have any questions about what we will have to pay for interest if we do not have the payment? The payment by the thirty-first? Do you have, recall what that interest is?
Eighteen percent.
Okay. So. Well, we have a motion and a second. If there's not any other questions, uh, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Absolutely. Cracklow?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Brunin?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Trendo?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Uh, we will pay it, and we'll have to note what, you know, what journal entries, what we've taken out of, and, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but we have, we have a contract, and we have services that are being rendered, and we need to pay for those services, so. Moving on to correspondence, I see there's nothing there.
There is nothing. I did receive a correspondence today, um, but it was not in time, so that will be part of the next agenda.
Well, I'd like to use this correspondence time then to welcome Yessi to our village.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yessi will be our new, uh, village clerk, um, deputy administrator, deputy treasurer, deputy jack-of-all-trades. Did you, yeah, you didn't know about the jack-of-all-trades thing, yeah. But we wanted to welcome you to Cambridge, and, uh, you know, if you need anything at all, um, we're a big happy community, as you can see, so. But welcome here.
Thank you.
You're not going to make her ba- clean up the raccoon, are you?
Speech, no.
No.
Speech, speech, no. No speeches, we won't put you on the spot, we just want you to feel welcome and, and, uh, be part of the family here, so.
I appreciate it. Very happy to be here.
All right, moving on to eleven, public comment number two. Anybody want to come up and make a public comment? All right, going once, twice. All right, moving on to number twelve. Questions, referrals to staff, or future agenda items? Anything?
I have a few things.
We're supposed to refer him to you.
I know, I'm sorry. Uh, so I wanted to let you know, and I believe I put it in the Friday recap, but I had a meeting with Ellers on budget prep. So behind the scenes, I have been working on the twenty-twenty-six budget. You will be involved. I am just gathering all the information that they're requesting, and we, um, Eller, Brian Romer from Ellers, and I'm not sure Casey, uh, will come with them as well, Casey Griffith, um, but they plan to be at the second board meeting in September. And that will be to give an overview based on everything I've submitted, um, very early. It's not going to be line by line, and then do some educational, uh, share some educational pieces regarding, uh, municipal financing, levy limits, and all sorts of other things, so a lot of education as well as a, an overview of where we're at. Then on the, for the future meetings, um, at the very end of September, I do have an Audit and Finance Committee meeting. I didn't reach out to see if that date worked for anybody, so it can be adjusted. But that's where, after that educational component, I'd like to meet with Audit and Finance Committee and start going line by line.
Okay.
And so that is the plan regarding that.
Yeah, I have one future agenda item that I would like. Uh, the meeting that I missed, there was a previous discussion with trustee Hollenbeck where she wanted me to take over the chair for Audit and Finance. But, uh, with that discussion, it was my understanding that she wanted off, and I was going to put Sarah on. So if we could have, uh, an agenda item for the next meeting, just committee assignments? And so we can discuss that and get over that confusion, because it would be imperative to have Sarah on Audit and Finance before all this, this.
Started.
Yeah, fun happens.
Yep.
So, and I just want to make sure that, you know, I guess Paula didn't take herself off.
No.
But it was voted on that I would be the chair.
Yes.
So I just want to get through that confusion. So if we could just put a line item on there for committee assignments? I mean, we're almost to the end of the year, and we're still talking about committee assignments, but, but that's the way it goes. Any other future agenda items or referrals to staff? Nothing, Sharon?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No, okay. Uh, let's see what else we got here. Upcoming meetings, August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, we got Joint Personnel, Water and Sewer. September fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Personnel Committee, September eighth, Plan Commission, September ninth, twenty-twenty-five, Joint Law Enforcement Committee, also September ninth, Village Board. September sixteenth, Water and Sewer Committee, September twenty-third, Economic Development. September twenty-third, uh, Village Board. September thirtieth, uh, Tentative Au- Audit and Finance Committee Meeting. Um, when is the next Plan Commission meeting?
It's.
It's on there, September.
September eighth, but I'm, uh, letting you know, do we have, uh, a hearing or have an agenda item for that? Because Sarah and I just discussed, and I just found out that I'm not going to be able to make it, so we may need to move that meeting, so.
I do have some public hearings, um, that are in the works, um, but won't be ready for the, the eighth, so I can.
Did Jane call you on the one?
Yep, we'll be connected regarding that one, and there's an additional one. There's a, a conditional use permit and some other things, so, um, let me send you guys, I'll send an email out to the entire commission and see what other dates work. And then I just want to make a correction, uh, for this Thursday, it's actually just going to be personnel. Uh, we don't have a quorum for Water and Sewer, so it'll be the Personnel Committee with, uh, one representative from Water Sewer for that.
Okay. All right.
We add September seventeenth for a Fire and EMS Commission meeting, please. And Lucy, you said the second board meeting of September, so the twenty-third would be the meeting with Ellers?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had that date correct.
All right. If there's not anything else, I'll take fourteen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Looks like we are adjourned, nineteen thirty-seven.